Order the Cataba County Board of Education regular meeting for October 27th, 2025. If you please rise, we'll have a moment of silence and presentation of color by Fantasy High School KROTC color guard.
States of America, two republics, which is one nation, honor God, goodness, liberty, and justice for all.
Sergeant Major Willard, I'm sorry Sergeant Major Matthew Wheeler, thank you for your colored guard. Have you seated? First on the agenda is the approval of minutes from September 22nd, 2025. I seek a motion for their approval. Hearing a motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor shall raise a hand. Anamis? Next on the agenda is adjustment approval of the agenda with the addition of new business number four D, approval of Tips USA Purchasing Cooperative Contract Proposal with Crenland Way for Repair of School Nutrition Central Freezer. Take a motion to approve the addition to the agenda.
Chairman, I make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Your motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor shall raise a hand. That is unanimous, motion approved for the agenda. Next is the chairman's report. Between now and our next meeting, there's Veterans Day. A lot of our schools have Veterans Day events going on, so please check with your local schools. If they have something going on and you're a veteran, you're more than welcome to go to it. Grandchildren, children go there, they'd love to have you, I'm sure. That's all I have, sir. Next up is the superintendent's report by Dr. Matthew Stover.
Thank you Chairman Settlemyer, members of the board. Thanks for a great work session this morning, got a lot accomplished. And that will lead us right into our awards this evening, so if the board would meet me out front. And Dr. McCreary, if you would meet us up there as well.
Good evening, members of the board and Chairman Settlemyer and Dr. Stover. We're very excited this evening to recognize some awesome students from Challenger High School that recently participated in the Skills USA competition. This, or the awards this evening, I would compare to winning the state championship in athletics. I'm just really, really proud of our students. And first off, I'd like to ask that the coaches for Skills USA come up. We've got Ms. Allison Stone. And she's from Challenger High School. And then we also have with us tonight from CBCC Tammy Moller and Kristy LaFever. Y'all could come up. Let's give our coaches a round of applause. Our first recognition this evening is for the whole team. And they are the 2025 Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference Champions. They earned first place as the outstanding chapter and also second place for entrepreneurship. So, big, big recognition for Challenger High School. Again, this is a national award, so congratulations. And then we're gonna give some individual awards this evening. This is for entrepreneurship and these students earned second place in the nation. First, we have Sarah Majid, if you could come up. We also have second place for entrepreneurship Riley Land. Also second place for entrepreneurship Dan Mattel. Again, second place for entrepreneurship Xavier Springs. And then finally, for first place outstanding chapter and first place in the nation goes to Diana Tellez Chavez. Again, congratulations to our entire team from Challenger High School. Job well done and congratulations on being national champions. Let's give them one more big round.
Thank you Dr. McCreary, Dr. Spry, thank you all. Challenger High School, great job. Partnership with CBCC, amazing. Well done. That's in the nation too, by the way. Want to make sure we didn't lose that anywhere. Okay, we're excited now to recognize our employees of the month. Every month, as I tell you, we have so many employees of the month, we can only recognize three each month. But I do want to recognize Chris Geddes for our Homes for Heroes. Mr. Geddes has been sponsoring this for years and years, we appreciate that. And so let's dive right into it. The Administrator of the Month for Cataba County Schools this month is Ms. Heather Kelly, our Assistant Principal from Mill Creek Middle School. Mrs. Kelly demonstrates exactly what our APs represent, and that is, is I think they do a little bit of everybody's job in the school. And Mrs. Kelly definitely represents that, we're thankful for her leadership. Mr. Everett, thank you for your team at Mill Creek Middle School, good to see you here tonight. Next on the list is our Certified Employee of the Month. And this is our School Counselor for Catawba Rosewell Education Center, Ms. Nanette Moss. Let's give her a big round of applause. So Ms. Moss is tasked with a lot of challenges in the fact of a lot of our students come with a lot of needs. And Ms. Moss is always there for our students. She is, never accepts for our students to have anything but excellence in the pursuit thereof. One thing that stands out to me about Ms. Moss is her dedication to our community. She takes our students out every other Friday to serve our community. And Ms. Moss has just done a wonderful job. And she's got a whole story behind herself too, from working her way up and going to school while she was having kids and married and all this wonderful stuff, and I could go on forever, but I won't. Ms. Moss, thank you for all you have done. And then our Classified Employee of the Month comes from Star Town Elementary, which is Ms. Heather Thomas, who's our receptionist, if you could come up. I'd recognize the last name Colonel, thank you for being here. She's your better half, I understand, but, but Ms. Thomas has done a wonderful job in our office area for Star Town. Ms. Stodden and her staff go on and on about how much she has lightened the office and just the personality, the safety, the loving of kids, the staff. So thank you very much. It's always great to go into a school where you feel loved and welcomed, and she does that very well. Let's give these three a round of applause. Thank you guys.
Next item on the agenda is public comment, and that will be guided by Mr. Clayton Mullis.
Cataba County Board of Education appreciates and welcomes all public comments. Members of the public who have signed up to speak may address board members on any topic of concern during the public comments section of a regular meeting. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the Cataba County Board of Education members. A time clock will be displayed to assist each speaker with their three-minute time limit. Speakers should direct their comments to board members rather than to the audience. Comments by members of the public should be respectful without slander toward any other member of the public, community member, members, or any member of the Cataba County Board of Education. Any displays of approval or disapproval are out of order unless otherwise directed by the board chair. First member to, first individual for public comments is Trevor Pittman.
Good evening, I hope y'all doing pretty good this evening. I come to not as a resident of Cataba County, resident of Rutherford. I own and operate a bail bonds business, and just happens this is one of the counties that I cover. Now, we're paralleling an investigation, and it's come to my light of a couple of things that needs to be brought to the board's attention since some folks can't return phone calls and answer emails. This is option number two. It's come to my, my desk that the schools have, apparently now we're okay with hiring felons to work in the school. I'll be happy to provide the name of the individual to one of y'all or a staff member after the fact, since that is one of y'all's employees and I ain't gonna dug a name out for you. But State Statute 115(c), that's 332 and A1, clearly says that if somebody is guilty of a fraud, a forgery, drug charges, you ain't to be working in school. I'm a father of five. I got family that go to school in y'all's district, I'm pissed. I don't send my school, my kids to school to be around as such. I don't expect my family to go to school to be around as such. State statute says it's not to happen. Now, I don't know what y'all's guidelines are to go through all these folks. System's obviously busted. It's busted in Cleveland County. Last couple of weeks, they found that one of their folks been there for 18 years under a false identity, teaching. So something along the system broke. I've called, I've sent the emails, nobody cared to respond, so plan B. On State Statute, in section H of the same, any applicant for employment who willfully furnishes supplies or otherwise gives false information for the employment on basis of the criminal history is guilty of a Class 1 misdemeanor. So she's racking up more charges, and she had a felony warrant last year on the same. Got it all right here for you. I know my time's about up. If y'all want to make the staff member available, I'll be out and off for a little bit.
Next speaker is Bonnie, is it Sharon?
Members of the board, Chairman Settlemyer, Dr. Stover. My name is Bonnie Shear. I was an educator in Cataba County many years. Retired from Cataba County, I was, I taught one year in New Jersey. As an educator in the county, I came across many people who were working hard for our children every day. One of those people I believe needs to be recognized is Dr. Leslie Barnett. She spent her career in Cataba County, working for the students, loving them, working with the staffs. She gave, she had a lot of knowledge, she had compassion, and she worked really hard for everybody. She started her career as a teacher assistant, then she became a classroom teacher. She went on to become an assistant principal. Then she was a principal at two of our elementary schools, Oxford and Lyle Creek, before going to the district level. At the district level, she became the Director of the Elementary Education, the federal programs, the early head start preschool for Cataba County Schools. She retired in 2018 after 42 years of service to the students, to the county, and doing a phenomenal job in every one of those roles. I never had the opportunity to actually work with Leslie. I just knew Leslie from many people and several situations that I was in. But I think it's really important that we recognize everything she did for this county and for the students. After she worked 42 years for the county, she went on to get elected twice to the county school board. And she worked with the county school board, again, for the betterment of the schools and the students and everybody associated with the schools. As we go forward as individuals and as a board, and we deal with everything in life, I think it's important for us to think about the compassion and the love that she gave everybody. She granted it to everybody, and to think about how we can carry on her legacy and her concern and her knowledge to better serve our community and our schools. Thank you.
Next speaker is Judy Beaman.
Cataba County School Board and distinguished guests, I'm also going to continue about Leslie. I'm here to honor her. I wrote an acrostic poem for her using the letters of her name and presented it to her before she, about a week before she passed. But I'm, I'd like to read it to you. Leslie H. Barnett, Leslie, likable, loving, an eloquent speaker, an example to others, sensitive, smart, a leader, a listener, literate, an idol to many, an inspiration, an excellent administrator, easygoing, honey cup, honorable, and our hero. Barnett, big-hearted, busy, awesome, approachable, radiant, respected, noble, nice, educated, energetic, terrific, tasteful, tender, tactful, a treasure, endearing, embracing, and engaging. I was privileged to be teaching at Oxford when Leslie came to us as our principal, then chose to move to Lyle Creek with her when it opened. She was an outstanding administrator. She knew every student by name, was diplomatic when solving problems between students, teachers, parents, and staff members. Leslie was very creative and caused the students to be excited about learning. I'll mention a few. One year when our theme was love, she dressed like Diana Ross and had her Supremes with her. We performed on stage. One year she stood on top of the roof promoting something, probably reading. She kissed a live pig one year. She entered the gym on a motorcycle during an assembly one year. In closing, I'd like to share a quote celebrating a person like Leslie Barnett. What you leave behind is not what is engraved in stone monuments, but what is woven into the lives of others. Thucydides. I'm sure that all that knew Leslie have a part of her woven into our lives. Let's give Leslie Honey Cup Barnett a standing ovation and the recognition she deserves for dedicating her entire life to the betterment of Cataba County Schools.
Next speaker is Kimberly Turk.
Good evening. Friday was report card day. I figured y'all knew that. And what you didn't know, I went to my high school reunion this weekend. Had a good time running into friends that I hadn't seen in at least a decade. And those two things came together for me. Because, I'm gonna tell you a little story, I struggled. I went to the North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics. I started out in Wilkes Central, went to science and math, and I wasn't ready in any way, shape, or form. I did not know how to manage my time, I did not know how to take notes, I did not realize that there was a difference between reading for pleasure and reading to learn. I almost did not get invited back for my senior year because my grades were so poor. Thankfully, my mother realized where my issues were, and she signed me up for a course at a community college called Academic Success. And I only agreed to take it as long as I also got to take microbiology, because I'm a nerd. And as long as I got to take microbiology, I was also willing to take her stupid study skills course that I did not think I needed. I was an AB student my senior year. I actually, several years later, science and math discussed not letting students come back if they had too many Cs. And an instructor actually stood up and said, do you realize that Kimberly would not have gotten to come back? I made that much of a change between my junior year and my senior year. I'm looking at the freshmen struggling this year. A lot of our freshmen got Fs on their nine-week report card, and they don't really think that we're gonna fail them, because they've been passed along for so many years. I also look at my seniors and my homeroom who did very well. I gave out quite a few candy bars on Friday, but I know that some of them are not gonna be ready when they show up in a college classroom, and there are no guided notes. They have to figure out how to do it on their own. They haven't been handed a textbook in a long time, because those are old-school things. I worry about the preparation our students have. We do have time during our day, or at least during our week, we still have homeroom at our school, I know all the schools don't. But we could implement some type of study skills course that would help teach students how to take notes the right way, the right ways to read, especially for students who've already failed a class. If they're in credit recovery, this could be part of what they do. When they're sitting in ISS and we haven't gotten them any work yet, if we had online modules that they could be given while they're in there that would help support their study skills, I think we could really help prepare our students better, whether they're headed to work or headed to school. Thank you.
Next speaker is Craig Meadows.
Craig Meadows, I'm a former teacher here. I need to say a few things more before detailing the lack of transparency and deception by this school system's leaders, because I know the interference is coming next. I've observed it here for a long time and seen it consistently throughout my lifetime. In fact, my life has been deeply impacted by people who have operated similarly to what I've observed and now experienced from Cataba County School. You will not silence me when I appear here. You will not intimidate me by threats of retaliation in our courts. If you do, I will take that threat to task, require you to walk the talk, and sit in a well-licked courtroom before a judge, with witnesses present and truth being spoken. You will not make a mockery of the justice system that I spent most of my young life being a part of. I was a police officer, detective, and drug task force investigator in service to my community for years before I was a teacher. My First Amendment rights to petition the government and exercise free speech will be protected. You will not violate my Fourth Amendment rights by ordering a deputy to detain me or restrain me while I'm exercising my First Amendment rights here tonight, or any other night. No police officer, including one who has previously served on this board when much of what disturbs me was occurring, has the legal justification to detain or restrain of what disturbs me was occurring, has the legal justification to detain or restrain me unless they have probable cause to believe a crime has been committed. No crime has been or will be committed by me. Catawba County Schools' policies are deceptively formulated to provide justification for preventing the disclosure of information that parents need and have a right to know to protect their children. Board of Education policy does not supersede state or federal law and cannot diminish one's constitutional rights. I won't violate policy either, and any attempt to portray me doing that would be well outside the proper scope of any school policy. This very board has routinely violated the North Carolina Open Meetings Law, and if you had adequate legal guidance you need, you would know that. If anyone wants to understand my motive for what I'm doing now, it is this: No employee or child should ever take their own life because their school system can't responsibly and effectively deal with systemic abuse and ethical inadequacy. I nearly took my own life in one of my deepest moments of despair following my brain injury and subsequent treatment. I was still very aware of students and families' past treatment by this school system that I have witnessed over the years, and it is deceivingly wretched.
Good evening, Board. I'm Josh Nixon. I'm an employee of Catawba County Schools and a parent, and I'm also the current president of the local chapter of the NCIE. A couple of quick things. First of all, I just want to reiterate what my colleague Julia LaRochelle said last meeting, recommending a former educator here at Catawba County Schools, Rhonda Pollack, as someone for consideration for the board vacancy. She's someone who has a long history as an educator and has the skills and values for that role, and so, and also spent a lot of time here at board meetings, very engaged in, as an educator outside of the classroom. So I'll say that. The second thing I wanted to bring up is I had the opportunity to attend one of the town halls this past week about the merger, and I'm not gonna comment for or against. I know that's not y'all's decision, so that's not the venue for this. But I did, I did go to that town hall with a couple of questions that I didn't feel were answered, and so if this moves forward, it's just things that I would like the board to pay attention to. One of the questions I went with was, how does bringing together different school districts affect, in particular, low-income students? And as funding moves around from school to school, as, you know, certain populations may be diluted, does that affect things like services for students, breakfast and lunch, and things like that? And maybe there is a clear answer to that, but I, you know, in both conversation with commissioners and hearing the presentation, didn't hear that. And then the second thing would be, what does that have to do, what would such a move, how would that impact a reduction of workforce among employees? And I don't just mean employees of Catawba County Schools, but employees of all three districts who put their energy and time into that, and would that impact jobs? And would folks who have given their life to education, whether, and I used to say teachers, but also custodial staff and school nutrition and data managers and media coordinators and all those people, what might they have to look forward to if such a thing happens? And then the third thing I just wanted to comment on is, I think the commissioners did a good job of explaining how adequate funding is essential for the experiences and outcomes for students. And so I would also ask, you know, this board and anyone else who's involved in decision-making in this county, say, "What are you doing to use your influence to ask our lawmakers at the state level to make sure that funding doesn't stop, that gaps of federal funding are filled, that a state budget is passed, and other things that impact funding in our state beyond just the concerns of this district?"
Next thing on our agenda are consent items, one through six. Dr. Stover?
Thank you, Chairman. We are looking for approval for those this evening.
Right. I seek a motion to approve consent items one through six.
I make a motion to approve the consent items one through six.
Hear your motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, show a raise of hand. Next is new business, approval of 2025-2026 school improvement plans presented by Mr. Lee Miller.
Thank you, Chairman Settlemeyer, board members. Tonight, I would like to request your approval of the school improvement plans presented earlier today in the work session. Your vote would not include the school improvement plans for Murray, Oxford, St. Stevens Elementary, Riverman Middle, and Mill Creek Middle. Those plans will be presented again in November, and we would request your approval at that time for those five schools. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hearing no questions, I seek a motion for approval of the 2025-2026 school improvement plans, which we all broke into groups today and listened to individually. Good to hear everything that they had.
I make a motion to approve the school improvement plans for '25-'26.
Hear your motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, show a raise of hand.
Thank you.
Next up is approval of requests for Board of Education Policy 93000. We'll start with the CREC, Mr. Adams. Did he step out already, Ms. Moss? Okay. So CREC, we know is moving to the East Campus, and today we talked about how all the input we got from our students and staff and community and our central office, and the name that we talked about this during our work session, when we move, would be North Star Academy would be the new name of Catawba Rosenwald, and their mascot would be the Phoenix. And of course, your packet is attached, the matrix of what the Phoenix stands for, for both behavior and instruction. And so tonight, I'm excited to ask for your approval of the naming of those facilities Okay, so I seek a motion to approve the naming of Catawba Rosenwald and to change our mascot to Phoenix.
I make a motion that we approve.
Hearing your motion. Is there any further discussion? None. All those in favor, show a raise of hand. Sir? Thank you. We're excited. That will launch next year, according to our current building plan. So they'll stay Catawba Rosenwald until then, but we're excited to get North Star Academy up and going. Thank you. Our second naming of facilities, and I would thank our retired educators for being here and all the fine words you said about Dr. Leslie Barnett. I know myself, our board, our central office agree with those, and so does Lyle Creek. And Lyle Creek presented a plan to name the media center after Dr. Leslie Barnett, and this afternoon, our board heard that, and we're, with their permission and their vote this evening, the media center will be named after Dr. Leslie Barnett, and she is absolutely wonderful. I'll never forget, I'll say one quick story, and I just always thankful for Dr. Barnett, and I'll never forget, the first day I was here, I met Dr. Barnett. And a lot of folks know my faith and how important that is to me, and she walked up to me and she said, "Dr. Stover, we've been praying for somebody like you." And who would have ever thought that I'd still be here, number one. But number two is that unfortunately, she's not. So with that, Board, I would ask to name the media center after Dr. Leslie Barnett. I seek a motion to approve the naming of Lyle Creek's Elementary School Media Center after Dr. Leslie Barnett.
I make the motion.
Hearing a motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, show a raise of hand. Adams?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approval of 2026-2027 proposed calendar for Challenger Early College High School presented by Ms. Ray Thompson.
Good evening, Chairman Settlemeyer, members of the board, Dr. Stover.
So this morning during the work session, I brought to you the draft calendar for Challenger Early College High School for the '26-'27 school year. Again, just a few reminders. The first teacher workday would be July 29th. The last would be May the 25th. Challenger, because CVCC is closed on Fridays, would have an every-other-Friday virtual day to allow them to follow the rules for CVCC. Additionally, they'll have a fall break, October 12th through the 16th, and then spring break will be separate from the Easter break, and that will be March the 8th through the 12th. So I seek your approval for this calendar this evening, and I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
I seek a motion to approve the 2026-2027 calendar for Challenger Early College High
I make a motion to approve the Challenger Early College High School for 2026. I mean, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Hear a motion. Is there any further discussion? None. All those in favor, show a raise of hand.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approval of requests from Catawba County Schools Operations Department, and they were presented by Mr. Stephen Westmore.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Settlemeyer, members of the board, Dr. Stover. Tonight, I come to you with a recommendation from the Catawba County Schools Construction and Maintenance Department to award the roofing project at the Transportation Storage Building that will recover approximately 4,000 square feet using the DuroTough .050 PVC material. The parent low bidder for this project is Conover Construction with a bid of $69,930. The contractor's warranty for this project is two years, and the manufacturer's product warranty is 20 years. This roof will match the previously awarded maintenance barn roof on the same material. And Robert and I will entertain any questions you guys have on this project. The good thing is, we'll be able to start quickly because they're already mobilized, and so as soon as they're finished with this project, we'll move right, stones throw away, and get started, so.
I seek a motion for the confirmation of the bid for the roofing of the Transportation Storage Building presented by Mr. Westmore.
Make a motion.
Hearing a motion. Is there any further discussion? None. All those in favor, show a raise of hand.
All right. I'm seeking approval for the final change order, number one, for Balls Creek Elementary School Mobile Modular Classroom Project. As discussed in today's work session, the project had original approved contract of $206,945, and with the $26,369.57 of credits, it's gonna reduce the final contract amount Is there any further discussion from today's work session?
I seek a motion to approve the change order presented by Mr. Stephen Westmore.
Well, that's what we're getting back, that's the credit. So the final contract amount is $180,575. Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve the change order.
Hearing a motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, show a raise of hand.
All right. Next, I'm seeking approval for the construction change directives, number one, and number two for the St. Stevens Elementary School Mobile Modular Classroom Project that were discussed in today's work session. Change directive number one consists of the location services that exceeded the $1,500 allowance by $700. The overage will come out of the general contingency allowance, leaving that balance at $9,300. And then change directive number two consists of the reworking of the light pole that was in the way of the bus traffic, so I had to get that moved. It also includes a credit due to the omission of the sewer lift station that's not needed now. This resulted in an additional $5,392.33 needed from the general contingency allowance, which left that balance at $3,907.67. Now, last on this project, I'm seeking approval for the final change order, number one, for this project at St. Stevens Elementary School. This project had an original approved contract of $247,700, or excuse me, $745, and with the credits of $3,907.67, which will reduce that final contract down to $243,837.33. Do you have any further discussion?
I seek a motion to approve the change order directive at St. Stevens Elementary School dealing with mobile units.
I make a motion to approve the St. Stevens Mobile Modular Project for $241,837.33.
Hearing a motion. Is there any further discussion? None. All those in favor, show a raise of hand.
All right. And lastly, the child nutrition utilizes two central freezers here across the street, and unfortunately, one is currently inoperable. It's the recommendation of the Catawba County Schools Construction and Maintenance Department to improve the Curlin Way's contract, which will dispose of the existing walk-in freezer condenser and indoor evaporator pool and install new equipment in the same locations. So the cost of this project is $106,664.51. Curlin Way is a part of that TIPS purchasing cooperative agreement, and they will also provide a one-year parts and labor warranty on this project. Robert, you said, "How quickly can they get on this project?" Eight weeks? Yes, sir. I think we've got a big, it's coming in January, right? We have to have it ready by January, as we've got a big shipment of food coming in, so we're in need of this space. That's right. We use existing, yeah, existing plumbing and everything already there. Yes, sir.
I seek a motion to approve the TIPS USA person for the contract with Curlin Ray for Player of School Nutrition Central Freezer for 106664.
Make the motion.
Hear a motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, show a raise of hand.
All right. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approval of proposed amendments to Catawba County Board of Education Policies. A is 3.000 religious-based exemptions from school programs, 3.6320 school trips, 060 use of wireless communication. Dr. Matt Stover.
Thank you, Chairman Settlemeyer, members of the board. As we discussed today, we had to make some changes to our current policy to align with the new state statutes that have come out, and our staff presented those to you today, so we are looking for approval of those this evening.
Make a motion we approve.
Thank you. I seek a motion for approval of the policies we spoke of this morning in our working sessions, 3.3700, 3.6320, 4.2060. We've been here all day since nine o'clock this morning, so make a mistake here or there is it's, it's not intentional, it's just we're talking, talked about this all day. So we've heard Don Sigmund's motion. I, I've asked the motion, he's, he's sent the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show a raise of hand. Next on the agenda will be approval of Catawba County Board of Education Schedule for School Visits. We, we discussed these and asked that they be moved Fridays to accommodate some schedules a little better, pared it down from what it used to be. Down to two, so we get to spend a little more time at each school, walk around, ask questions. Like this, it goes all the way. Thirty. Don't have to follow this, come with the board every time we come, that's fine, but if you want. But I do seek a motion to approve. That's not it. We got a new updated sheet here in front of us. So I seek a motion for approval of this.
I make a motion to make a, to make a, sorry. I make a motion to approve the school visits schedule.
A motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show a raise of hand. That is unanimous? So next on the agenda is approval of fulfillment of an unexpired term. Talked about this this morning, where Board were governed by Roberts Rules. Killing that, we were going to, we planned to use, ask that we use the nomination and ballot method as the preferred vacancy filling procedure under Roberts Rules because it's not only orderly. Motion that we approve that and that we do this on our November 24th meeting vote and then bring in at the December meeting party that is selected.
I'll make the motion.
Hearing a motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show a raise of hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of personnel recommendations. Want to have any questions? Hearing none, I seek a motion for approval of personnel recommendations.
I make that motion.
Hearing a motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show a raise of hand. unanimous? That brings us to the end of our, our meeting. Seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion, we adjourn.
Hearing a motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show a raise of hand. unanimous? Meeting is adjourned.